All right, all right. We're gonna call the Monday, November 3rd, 2025 organizational meeting to order. Dr. Pickles?
So at this time, it's time for us to do our annual reorder. So at this time, I would like elections for our chair. Do I have any nominations? We'll have the election of the chair.
I move to nominate Ms. Carroll Gibson.
A second.
Are there any more nominations? Hearing none, I have a vote. All in favor? Five zero, Ms. Reed. We'll go to the election of the vice chair.
Madam Superintendent, I nominate Ms. Katie Knight, Board Member Katie Knight.
And I would like to nominate Ms. Carol Gibson. I do want to nominate Ms. Carol Gibson for the vice chair.
I second.
So I have a motion and a second for Ms. Carol Gibson to serve as our vice chair. Have any more discussion? Any more nominations? All in favor? Five votes. So this time now, we'll go to the school board committee appointments. So we have several we have to discuss. We have the value adjustment board.
I'm still on that one.
You're voluntary to stay?
You're voluntary to stay. Is there anyone else that has any conflicts with Ms. Hagan staying on as the value adjustment board member?
No, ma'am.
Need a motion, Miss Reed?
I move to have Ms. Hagan as the value adjustment board.
I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Knight for Ms. Hagan to serve on our value adjustment board. Our local business member will continue, Ms. Margaret Anne.
Yes.
So we will continue that way. So all in favor? So now I need a legislative board member, please.
I would like to-
Do I have any nominations?
I would like to serve if no one else has an interest in it.
Madam Superintendent, I nominate Board Member Thompson. Second.
Do I have any other discussion or any other nominations? Hearing none, I have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Gibson for Ms. Devon Thompson to serve as our legislative board member. All in favor? The third one is our FSBIT insurance representative.
I am still willing to continue in that capacity.
I nominate Board Member Katie Knight, second.
I have a motion and a second from Ms. Hagan, second by Ms. Gibson for Katie Knight to serve as our FSBIT insurance representative. All in favor? And our district insurance committee representative. So that's our school district insurance committee that we have.
I'm still willing to serve in that capacity as well.
I move to have Katie Knight serve as our district insurance.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Hagan for Katie Knight to serve as our district insurance committee rep. All in favor? And our last, our chamber of commerce representative.
I would like to nominate Ms. Reed.
I have a motion by Ms. Knight and a second by Ms. Hagan for Carol Gibson to serve as our chamber of commerce rep. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Let me go back to the small district council consortium, our small school district.
I nominate Becky Carroll.
I second.
I just gonna say now, some of them things I can't go to way down yonder.
Will we always nominate over here?
Yeah.
So I have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Knight for Mr. Carroll to serve as our small school district council consortium member. All in favor? Five votes. So now we will go on to item 2.4, our schedule of our regular meetings of the board. During our master board training, we did discuss various options. So this presentation, these dates are for the one meeting a month and the workshop with the administrative team. So I have the dates there for you. If you want to change something, I did have one member indicate a little different from another neighboring county during our workshops. We will not take any action on any items, so we will always call a special meeting if there should be something.
And you're free to change anything but the organizational meeting. That's set by statute. It has to be on that day.
This is election year. Are there any questions on our dates presented? Do I have a motion to accept the dates?
I move we have separate dates.
I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Carroll and a second by Ms. Knight to accept the schedule of the regular meetings of the board for the 25-26 year calendar for fiscal year. All in favor?
Shouldn't we let the public know now that we're the times?
Yes, I can do that. So our school board meetings will now be the public voting meeting. The regular scheduled meeting will always be the first Monday of the month. The third Tuesday of the month, we will have a workshop. No voting taking place, but the board will actually workshop the entire agenda with the administrative team.
At what time?
8:30 in the morning for the workshops on the Tuesday mornings and 6:00 PM for our board meetings. Yes, ma'am. Which ones?
The 8:30 meeting, all of them.
We can. So any other questions? Hearing none.
Did they vote?
They did.
Okay.
Five votes. Then I'll accept a motion, entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
It's adjourned. All right.
Okay.
Take the vote real quick to adjourn and then we can go.
Move to adjourn.
Since we're going right into, now you can play musical chairs.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask if I may stay here and have the superintendent and Mr. Reeves in the center and have two board members on either side, if that's okay with everyone?
All right with me?
You're prerogative.
Yeah, it's your chair.
So whoever sits over here.
I won't be at that end.
For now, you have to share the microphone. Tell me if you have a preference on the side.
Oh, watch out. Nope. Listen, buddy. You need your chair, you want mine?
I guess in that order.
Actually, I think you could stay. Carol, I think, Carol, I think you could stay.
No, she's biased, Chris.
Which, how did you want it? Mr. Reeves?
You need to go down one.
You need to get down, because we only have three chairs on this side of you.
Oh, you're saying I need to go?
Yeah.
She was trying to be a princess instead.
Unless you want the attorney on the other side of you. That's fine too, whatever's more than most comfortable for you.
That's fine.
You have to share your computer with me tonight.
Okay, I got you.
If Mr. Reeves can be here and Ms. Gibson-
Well, she's at your right, okay.
Okay, so Mr. Reeves, we're gonna just-
Frank, you probably need to move here.
It's okay.
And Mr. Reeves get where Katie and Katie move down.
She wants two board members on each side.
It's okay.
Well, it doesn't matter because her vice chair has to be next to her and her attorney too, so that doesn't work.
Okay.
Come a little bit.
Just stay where you are. Beeta, if you shift down one, it'll be the way she wants it to be.
I can get on the end.
Just take your chair with you.
That's where I used to sit on the years ago. This is actually where it started since 30 years ago.
But then, see, when you need to talk to your attorney, your attorney needs to be next to you, the board chair. Your attorney needs to be next to you when you get ready to talk to your attorney. You can't be on the end down here.
He wasn't next to Mr. Reeves.
Just start now. We can figure that all out later.
We'll just play musical chairs for a while. All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Madison County School Board meeting for Monday, November 3rd. Thank you all for joining us. I want to remind the audience about our cards to speak. I see that we have some cards. The yellow cards are for non-agenda items and the blue cards are for agenda items. If you filled out the yellow cards, you will be asked to speak later in the meeting. Before we begin, let's see, that's all I have with that. And I would also like to remind the audience that this is a meeting of the school board to do business of the board. Okay. I will now call this meeting to order at 6:11 PM. Please join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Mr. Carroll, I'm gonna ask if you will open us in prayer.
Faith heads, please. Lord, thank you for the day, for your many blessings, for I pray you'll be with us tonight. You'll help us all to do the things that's right and pleasing to you. We ask that you guide us in decisions that we make. I ask that you keep us all safe as we go home tonight. I will just thank you again for everything you've done, in your name. Amen.
We have no, currently no blue cards, Ms. Tammy, no blue cards. Okay, so these will be later in the meeting. Okay. Let's see. All right, so we have some amendments to the agenda. If you all will, we're gonna pull 7.1 supplements from the agenda and then we're, 7.1, just the supplements.
Just the supplements.
Yes, ma'am. And then we're also going to pull 8.2 for a workshop at a later date.
Okay.
Okay. Everyone have that?
7.1 supplements and 8.2, through the progression plan, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Ms. Tammy, five zero, to accept the agenda. All right, so we're gonna move on. We have a presentation, let's see, from Highlands. Do we have someone here? I'll invite you to come up with your presentation.
How you guys doing?
We're doing well, thank you.
Thank you, board. Superintendent, and this is Robert, he's not here today, but we have the presentation.
Well, we should have set that up prior to you.
Do you, is it like a video? How does?
It's like PowerPoint slide.
PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint presentation that we've uploaded?
Yeah.
Yeah, we all have it.
All of the board members, yeah, we do have the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we'll just pull it up.
Do you want, we can pull it up on here from the agenda.
We have a flash drive as well.
Okay. We should be able to pull it up on here.
Flash drive might be quicker.
Let's see.
So while we do that, my name's Matthew Scott, the regional business manager for the Southeast. I feel like I need to get some residency for, because we've been here a lot. We're working with numerous additional counties around.
Talk to the noticely good place.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you can raise it up, or give a guess.
Yeah, but while we do that, I was just gonna say, I feel like I should have some residency here. I live in Houston, Texas, but don't hold that against me.
You can move the face axes here.
But, so we're working with Union County, Gaston County, Dixie, Kip Jacksonville, and Duval in North Florida, also Glades down south, and multiple districts in Georgia as well. But I can go through it with the screen. Yeah, so we are a third-party electrification provider of school buses. So not only just the school bus, but also the infrastructure as well. So we do it all. Not only just the funding, but the financing of the entire project, there's no upfront costs to the county whatsoever. We're trying to make this as affordable as possible versus diesel buses. What we're looking at today is seven buses on a twenty-
How many buses do you have?
Out of 22. So we have a award, and we'll get to it in a, in a, in a period. But it is about $2.8 million to furnish to the county. It's an EPA award, a federal award. We did a group application and we had a district, a neighboring district, of course. Ms. Lisa knows who they are very well. Decided not to move forward with this award. And it's for eight buses for $325,000. So with that being said, we're looking to, we can reallocate the EPA so that we can reallocate the funds to any school district in the state of Florida that has priority status. The priority status is Title I, all kinds of different. It's an EPA criteria, it's not our criteria. But we're looking to furnish almost $3 million into the district. With that being said, it's going to lower your operating costs for the seven buses. You're gonna know exactly how much you're gonna spend on these buses for the next 10 to 12 years. It's, it's a really good presentation about that.
It's okay.
Am I on my school bus donk today? So not only do we procure the school buses, we also do the infrastructure, all the chargers, everything that, everything that is associated with these buses is covered 100%. Your maintenance is covered. Your tires are covered. Everything is covered. It's about, we'll get into the TCO, the total cost of ownership, but it's gonna lower your cost 30 to 50%.
It's okay.
So we take all the, we take all the risk and complexity with all the, and all the upfront expense, so you don't have to. We're guaranteeing a 97% uptime on all the chargers. The vehicles be route-ready every single day. If you do have an issue, it's a 30-minute response time. Like I said, you'll know exactly how much you guys are gonna spend, so you have price stability. You know, there's no up and down with diesel costs, there's no up and down with maintenance costs, everything's associated with this is covered. So we're gonna finance the entire project, the buses, the delta of the buses, these buses are like $400,000. Well, that's $345,000, so it's $400,000. We do all the project planning, we secure the vehicles and the chargers, we do all the permitting and installation, we've already talked to utilities. Handle all the charger operation and maintenance, maintenance reimbursement. So every time one of Tyrone's guys touches a vehicle, it's a reimbursement to the district around $60 an hour plus your parts. So there's gonna be a reimbursement, so whatever number you see today, there will be a reimbursement every time he touches the vehicle. So he can pay this $60,000. And he'll be able to see everything on his either laptop or phone. Your feelings included as well. And then we come out and do all your driver and staff training as well.
Does that include maintenance training as well?
Yes, ma'am. It's a whole curriculum. So here, whoa. Oh, there's a little hand. So we're based in Massachusetts, as you see the saturation in the Northeast. I'll turn it for you. But we're really proud of the dots from Texas to Florida. Dom and I have been actively marketing using these EPA dollars. So the dots in Florida are Glades and Dixie today, because those are operational. We'll have 26 vehicles at Duval County in December, operational in December. We got Kip Jacksonville, the Charger School, Union County for 10? Six.
68.
Oh, 688. And then it was 23 at Dixie and 26 at Duval, so 13 at Glades. So we've been actively marketing, so we have over 1,100 vehicles under contract. We partner with about 100 great school facilities. So I'm not gonna read this, but this was unsolicited, well, it was solicited. I asked Glades County for a recommendation for this meeting, and I didn't think he was gonna send all of that, but I would, I would want you guys to read this, it's phenomenal. I'll just point out a few things. Where Highland Electrically truly distinguishes itself as a partner, they are far more than a lessor. They are a true operational partner. Their team has been exceptional, accommodating, demonstrating remarkable flexibility when it comes to navigating complexities and charging infrastructure, route optimization, etc. That's a mouthful. But like I said, we're operational at Glades and Dixie, and we have 42 buses across North Florida. That would be across the fence line, sure. So that's implementation of construction and the buses company. Here's another one from Dixie.
I'll lower this microphone a little bit, I'm not quite at Matt's height, but good evening to the board. Superintendent Pickles, thanks for the time tonight and thanks for having us in to speak about this opportunity. As Matt mentioned, we've done a lot of work across the Southeast, particularly in North Florida, of really creating a hub in terms of EV transportation. But essentially, what we are doing outside of designating what type of vehicle it is, is really trying to leverage economic savings with federal funding dollars. And we're trying to reduce your operational risk and we're trying to reduce your financial risk to really create budget certainty from year one through the extent of our operation and public-private partnership. So in this instance, we have around three awards to a district that will not be utilizing it with $345,000 per vehicle. We have three neighboring districts up in the northern part of Florida that will be implementing a similar solution, doing just as we mentioned, essentially creating budget certainty and reducing your risk. The requirements of these EPA dollars is, in terms of us moving them to another district, the bus has to serve the new district for a minimum of five years. We'll handle the grant reporting requirements to the EPA. And it needs to be implemented before July of 2026. The way Highland operates is, we operate on a per-bus-per-year basis. So there is a fee associated with our service, but the district does not owe any dollar out of pocket, and will continue to not, not owe any dollar out of pocket until the site's fully operational. We're also doing an incentivized agreement where if we cannot operate to the point we said we are going to operate, you still don't owe us money or we reimburse back for the time that we're not doing what we said we would do. So in this scenario, we have a little over $2.7 million available. We're discussing seven buses out of the eight this evening. And the way we can do procurement across the country and within the state of Florida is through Sourcewell, which handles competitive procurement. Here's a site plan subject to further review. We were actually just talking about this earlier. I don't think we'll get caught up in the details tonight, but I think there would be a slight shift here of moving them closer to the fence line. Really, the point I want to get across here is that we do very extensive work with your utility provider and the contractors that we would, we would work with to stand up the site. I'll jump into pricing, everyone's favorite conversation. With the EPA funding that's available and buses that we've already purchased through a partner, through a dealer partner here in Florida, we'd be able to stand up this project with every aspect of electrification for $18,000 per bus per year. Again, that would start at the beginning of the site being fully operational, which is a date that would be agreed upon by both Madison County and Highland, that yes, the site and buses are fully functional and ready to transport students. This would be seven Bluebird Type C vehicles on a 12-year agreement. What I would note here is a lot of words on the left-hand side of that slide, but essentially it kind of outlines everything that factors into what, what we're contributing to the project. The key factor here is that with leveraging this grant funding and the public-private partnership, you're not coming out of pocket for expensive vehicles, and you're creating this budget certainty throughout the duration of that contract compared to, an example on this slide is if you were to purchase new diesel vehicles this year, $165,000 is the upfront cost. That's a real-time quote from another district within the state, and we have seen that increase already, with examples of how much you would pay for fuel and maintenance and repair. Rather conservative estimates, these typically go up and fluctuate, especially as diesel costs change, but also as in year eight, if you have a transmission go out, that bus is no longer under warranty and you're gonna be paying for a transmission. So even under our agreement, if a battery goes out, anything expensive goes out, we have the full warranty for the duration of the contract, so there's no risk to the district of a heavy upfront cost or Tyrone coming to you in year seven and saying, the battery's out, we need $150,000, it's covered under our agreement. I do want to be mindful of the board's time, I'll leave it to Matt if he has any closing remarks, but I'll be back here if you have any questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's time. Just keep in mind that if you, this is eight bus, seven buses for the price of less than one. You'll get seven brand-new buses to run for-
What happens with an eighth bus?
We can do an eighth bus.
I can speak to that. We have, we have previously purchased seven buses. I think if the, if the district wanted to do an eighth bus, we'd have no issue with it. We were talking about potentially a special education bus.
Same contract?
Yeah, we would do an amendment onto the contract. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
What is the turnaround time that you would anticipate, like, for setup and things like that?
We would like to be operational July 2026.
Because there's a timeframe, you just said there's a timeframe.
There is a timeframe for, to, for tax credits. There's some tax credits that expire July 2026. That's why, that's how we're able to get- expire July 2026. That's why, that's how we're able to get that $18,000 number.
So you will be able to, um-
Yes, ma'am.
Get it. Okay, thank you.
We're looking forward to coming back.
I may clarify that. So this is just the presentation tonight. So I would bring this back at our meeting on the 17th because it does, if it's signed after 11:30, then the price would increase.
And are we going to consider, you know, that-
I plan on bringing it back.
That, that eighth bus, especially, whatever they were talking about, and it wouldn't be any other expense?
And I did reach out to a couple of board members from some of the other school districts as you service, and they all actually spoke very highly. So I, I will say that.
That's great.
I said the buses were doing very well for them, so.
Ms. Gibson, did you have any questions?
Yes. How many years have you been doing, putting buses in the schools?
So we've been in business since 2019.
Twenty-nine?
2019.
2019?
And we have over 1,100 buses under contract.
Okay. The first thing that comes to my mind is safety on electric vehicles. I don't have a, what you call a good taste in my mouth about electric vehicles. And we, that's, safety is our number-one issue, you know, concern, let's say. So, um, I'd like to know what type of track record they've had, you know, and some information about, not right now, you know. But I'm interested in that.
We could provide additional information. Typically, what we see is there's 90% less moving parts. Um, and 70% of all bus fires, not EV bus fires, are typically caused by the 12-volt battery, not the battery system on the bus that has a lot of procedure and protocol over it. Again, we can provide additional information for your review, but I'd say our number-one priority is also safety. And if we ever do have an issue with the bus, it'd be the same as a diesel or anything else. Get the kids off, make sure the kids are safe. And if the bus needs to have a problem out there with no kids, it can have its problem out there with no kids. But, um, we can provide additional information for your review.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on to number five consent agenda items. We have item number 5.1 minutes, 5.2, the agreement between MCSV, CHP, the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, and Titus Sports Academy. And Dr. Pickles, are you, like, would you like to speak on that?
Um, so it's been up there. So they have reached out several times. We've talked about having this agreement, putting this in place. They would like, Capital Health Plan would like to put this program at our K8 school. Um, so this is the agreement that they have presented. If we would, it would not start till January. I, when I spoke to them before, I said we need to get through consolidation and then get the school year started. So it would only be for a short term. It would be from January until May.
I will now entertain a motion to approve number five consent agenda items.
I move to approve, uh, number five consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I said it.
Ms. Tammy, I have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Knight. Any questions or discussion on consent agenda items? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on file consent agenda. Ms., Ms., are you, are you, we're calling for a vote. All in favor?
Hmm.
Okay. Well, Ms. Hag, I didn't know if Ms. Haggin heard me. Sorry. No, no. Five-zero, Ms. Tammy. Okay. All right. We're gonna move on to item six, travel and trips for consideration. Dr. Pickles?
Um, do you have two trip, well, two trips for three employees, um, Dr. Holmes and Ms. Hughes-Lakes to attend the FOEL conference. This will be coming from Title II, any of their expenses. And then the final cohort session for our Assistant Finance Director, um, Ms. Sandy Fletcher, which you approved last year for, for her to go through this cohort. This will be her final meeting. So I do recommend approval for these.
I will now entertain a motion for approval of the travel and trips.
I move to approve the tra, staff travel and trips.
Second, anyone?
My second.
Okay. Ms. Tammy, we have a motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Ms. Knight. All in favor? Five-zero. All right. Let's move on to number seven, financial and HR. And we are pulling, um, seven-
Numbers four and five.
Numbers four and five from 7.1, which is the supplement. And we will have Mr. Copeland come.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we have three items to consider individually tonight on our HR list. Uh, you have those in your package, personnel changes, approved volunteer list. You'll see that there's a healthy list again, and, which is much appreciated. And then we have one request for a transfer of sick leave. And those are the three items. Any questions, I will be glad to answer.
All right.
I'm gonna take the motions separately. So first, I'll first.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and entertain a motion for the personnel changes.
I move to approve the personnel changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a second by Ms. Gibson, uh, motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Mr. Carroll. All in favor of approving the personnel changes? Five-zero, Ms. Tammy. Does anybody have any discussion? All right. Let's move along to the volunteer list. Do I have a motion to approve the volunteer list?
I move to approve the volunteers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Mr. Carroll. Let's call for the vote. All in favor? Five-zero to approve the volunteer list. And then let's, we're gonna move to number three, the transfer of sick leave for Ms. Holmes. Do I have a motion to approve the sick leave, transfer of sick leave for Ms. Holmes?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the sick leave, transfer of sick leave for Ms. Holmes.
Do I have a second?
My second.
I have a motion by Ms. Haggin and a second by Ms. Knight to approve the sick leave for Ms. Holmes. All in favor? Five-zero. Okay. We're gonna move on to 7.2. Mr. Copeland, do you want to present on the Florida Department of Education Form ESC 348 report of financial data?
Yeah. It's that time of year to submit the annual data. This is our internal data for 2024-25 that we will undergo audit on. And so make note that there will be audit adjustments, but-
I'm gonna, and I'm attempting to delineate the fact, the document. This is gonna give you a one-page summary that we'll quickly go through, and then I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, what, what's captured in the, the report of annual financial data, uh, sent to DOE is the 2024-25 operating results internally by fund. When we put those together in a consolidated financial statement, which will be audited by the Auditor General, they lumped some of the funds together. But I tried to lay it out so it would maybe give you a roadmap of what's entailed in the document. And so if you start, uh, the left column there is general fund. You see the total revenues, total expenses, excess deficiency, or transfers in from our capital projects fund, and then our net change in fund balance, and beginning fund balance, and ending fund balance. It'll be the same formula for each of these funds. The special revenue fund, which is the next one to the right, those, that is your Title I, Title II, Title V, and your food service. It's lumped together in the financial statements. Special revenue, the, the, the next one, the, these are the, what I call the COVID funds. They've been closed out essentially in 24-25. They're done with. We're not gonna have those going forward. So, but we will have the results of the 24-25, and that's what we have in the package. Capital projects, the next one, this is our local, our 1.5% on our, uh, property taxes that we have discretionary spending. You can see how we utilized it in 2024-25. And the next one, the capital projects other, the main portion of this is the FEMA and the Department of Emergency Management Public Assistant Grant slash Loan for, uh, our insurance deductibles. There's still some reconcili, this number will change somewhat, but the, the major portion is what's been distributed to us versus what we've spent on those, uh, insurance deductible loans. I actually have, uh, I am working to set up a meeting with Department of Emergency Management because I just need to sit down and go through it with them. It's quite complicated. And, um, most of it had, had, had been taken care of before I started. So, uh, I wanna get someone to help say grace over that, but that's where it stands right now for the 24-25 year. Debt service, the last one. These are 2010 construction bonds the school district issued. We're paying them down, principal and interest every year, and I think they're projected to be paid off in 2027. That in a nutshell is what all the paperwork compiles in, in much more detail.
Okay.
Again, when we get the audited compiled financials, we will bring them to the board. That's a process that takes a while. So, uh, any questions I can try to answer, or, um-
Do any of you have any questions for Mr. Copeland? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to accept the presentation of the Florida Department of Education Form Report of Financial Data from, from Mr. Copeland.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the financial report as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Haggin to accept, and a second by Ms. Gibson. All in favor of accepting the Florida Department of Education Form from Mr. Copeland as presented? Five-zero, Ms. Tammy? Okay. We're gonna move on.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to number eight, items for individual consideration. We have pulled item number 8.2, so we are going to see, um, and grant information from Ms. Roderick.
Um, Ms. Roderick's out of town, so I will talk about this. This is the approval of the migrant education program. So that's one of the things. We always bring you the, um, grant awards when they are received. So this is for the, I think it's a lower, just over 9,000 for our migrant education program. So it's approval of the Title I Part C, so we can go ahead and start allocating the funds.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the Title I Part C, um, 8.1 of the agenda.
I move to approve the 8.1 grant information.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Ms. Haggin to approve item number 8.1. I will now call for a vote of approval. All in favor? Five-zero, Ms. Tammy. Okay. We're gonna move on to superintendent items. Dr. Pickles?
I have several things. I did send everyone an invite for the North Florida College, um, for Ms. Page, Dr. Page. So everyone should have received their invite, so that you can block that on your calendars. Um, the next thing I would like to inform you of, in case you have not noticed, um, we did a little, um, lawn care around the district office. I had some complaints. So I hope you take notice that it's all trimmed up. And I have also now received a quote for the pressure washing. So we'll, we'll try to spruce up. Um, and then once we can ever fix the flagpole, then we'll put our flag back up. So, but we're trying to repair items around here and clean items up. So, um, the last thing I did wanted to remind you today was the ending of the, um, agreement or the vacate notice that Mr. Reeves sent out, um, for the North Florida Child Development. And, um, as of earlier today, they were still there and had not boxed anything up. So, starting tomorrow, we will no longer serve meals or transport the children.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Carroll?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Knight?
Um, no. I mean, I just, I wanted to say, um, uh, number one, we had a very successful fall festival out at the, um, Central School on, uh, Thursday evening. It was, uh, great to see all the kids out there. There was a lot of, uh, parents and grandparents and, uh, children and family in attendance. Um, I thought it was a great event and a great gathering of, you know, the school under consolidation. Um, I also just wanted to, um, put on the board's radar, um, I have had multiple conversations, uh, with the superintendent and I with FISBIT in reference to the settlement for a lot of the outstanding hurricane damage settlements that we've been trying to not only collect on, but get statement of losses so that we can reconcile with FEMA before we lose that funding. Um, the, the big hiccup that's really just, the ag buildings are really becoming a thorn in my side. And they just keep coming up with excuse after excuse as far as these buildings are concerned. So I have had some very firm correspondence within this week with the superintendent. Um, I, they are supposed to be having a conference call tomorrow to be able to try to get some clarification. But I have suggested that the superintendent, that if we are not able to get some resolution on this, that we might want to entertain bringing a private adjuster onboard, you know, so that we can get this resolution, because our children are suffering because we are not able to get this done. And it's just been excuse after excuse after, after excuse. And we have gotten to the point where we have used this excuse and gotten down to this excuse, but now we're back to the first one. So, um, I have put it on the radar of the superintendent, um, that it may be something that we need to entertain at a future meeting. So I just wanted to let you all know, um, because I know, Ms. Gibson, that you ask often about those ag buildings as well, that, um, I, I, they may not want me as the FISBIT trustee.
No, you're gonna stay there. I've already done my time.
After, after I'm done with them, with these settlements, they may not want me there. But, um, at the end of the day, we may lose out on some of our FEMA reimbursement because we can't get this stuff in. So, you know, she's been working very, very hard on this. I will give her that. Um, and she is spending way more of her time trying to get these settlement statements to get this all reconciled than she ever should be. So I, I just want to put that on the board's radar, that if we are not able to come to resolution, my recommendation was that we entertain hiring a private adjuster.
Well, what's the excuse? What's the excuse?
I mean, it, which one would you like me to?
Well, there's multiple excuses.
I mean, there's one where they wanted us to extend the quote to include, um, uh, electrical permitting in the greenhouse. And then we went to, oh, we didn't include freight and shipping in the estimate for the greenhouse. And at the end of the day, it's all really irrelevant because the greenhouse, I mean, we only insure it for so much money. They're only gonna pay us that much. So if the estimate we get is $50,000, but we only insured it for 20, you're just gonna pay us 20. So why do I need to go, you know, jump through all of these unnecessary hoops? I mean, right now, we're to the point, they don't like the electrical estimate because they want us to break it down to how many nuts and bolts are, is the electrician using? So, I, I just, again, we are very firmly working on this, but I am to the point where, like I said, my recommendation is that a future meeting, I would entertain us to vote on bringing in a third party to represent us.
Well, thank you for your interest and what you're doing. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna start. Uh, Mr. Attorney, do you have anything?
Um, no, other than, I know you've got some comments coming up on the North Florida Child Development. Um, what you all had instructed me to do was to send a letter giving them a notice. They had to be out today. You did not instruct me on what to do after that if they didn't get out. So what you would need to do is, if, if you want me to take some action, obviously the board has to tell me what action to take. Um, and, you know, you may want to wait and hear the comments and all that, and then if you want amended agenda, at that time you could.
Okay.
Take whatever action.
Ms. Haggin?
Yeah.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, I look forward to the future with hope and positivity regarding the use of our, of Pineado, Lee, and Greenville Elementary Schools. Thank you.
Okay. I will now move on. We have some public comments, and I will call you up in order of the cards that I have received. I'm gonna ask that you come to the mic to speak. You will have three minutes. We have a timer here. So first, I have Jakuria Franklin. And if you don't want to speak, and you, you know, decided you don't want to, that's completely up to you. But I have Jakuria Franklin first. I'm gonna ask for the record that you state your name and- I'm gonna ask for the record that you state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jakuria Franklin, and I'm a parent of North Florida Child Development. I had my first child there, and my second is four years old. I love North Florida Child Development. They're a good school, great teachers, and it's a great environment. I hate to see it go, but I wish the best. I hope y'all think about the kids and their future and the parents.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next I have Dominique Tompkins. And again, I'm gonna remind you, you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Dominique Tompkins. Only thing I gotta say, I'm asking y'all, if y'all can, as parents, I know all of us are parents. Some of us got grandchildren, some of us got this next. If you could just extend it out to the rest of the year. There's too much going on right now to try to close it down in the middle of the year. I'm asking that on my behalf, on my behalf. Just work with, what goes on with the school district in, in our city has nothing to do with the parents and the children. The children love the teachers, they love the school that they're going through. Please just help us out and let us just extend it to the rest of the year. And that's all I gotta say. I'm being honest.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next I have Joe Rowe. If you will, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Rowe, and thank you Superintendent Board for this opportunity. And I just wanna echo what the young lady just came over here and said. Closing in the middle of a school year would be detrimental to the kids. My son, you know, we took him a lot to get him to go to school, to go to school and to, to just uproot him and try to get him to start a new routine would be difficult. I grew up in Madison, went to school, graduated, and love Madison County. But this is one of the reasons that my two daughters don't go to school in Madison is because of this year. And I would hate to have to, my son, to have to relocate or we have to move him because he can't finish out where he started here. So if there's anything that can be done, if, if there's any way that we can extend this to the, to lease school is out, that would be great, at least for the kids. And hopefully, the board and North Florida Child Development can come up with something for the kids so that the kids can remain where they at and finish their education. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. The last name that I have is Jasmine Warren. Ms. Warren, if you will, please state your name for the record.
Jasmine Warren.
Thank you.
Good evening. I agree with the last parents. I have a four-year-old that attends there. I also had a sixteen-year-old, a thirteen-year-old that went there. Like she said, whatever, you know, has went on with you guys, and then we just look forward to doing it for the kids. You know, we were, we're asking y'all to at least extend it to the end of school year if possible, you know. My four-year-old, he's very shy, so, you know, taking him from one, you know, place to another, I think that would be kinda hard, you know, right now. But we have grown, you know, like family with the teachers and staff there, so we just ask for extensions for the kids.
Thank you. That is all the comments that we have from the public. Do I have any comments or anything from our board regarding?
Let me ask, ask you all this. Do you realize funding for this will not, for North Florida Child Care Development will not be extended? They do not have fundings for that until the end of the school year? Have they told you when their fundings end? So that we're adjusting all costs. And in fact, some of you here who have spoken to me about when these children were not being picked up, and we have buried that cost, I bought it before the school board, and the cost of transportation. You asked me to see that if the board could transport those children. And that's what we did, because North Florida, Florida Child Care Development was not transporting the children. We fed those children, transported the children, fed them. I've not been paid for that. They have the money, they have the grants. And as a matter of fact, I sympathize with you. It is not you, the parents. It is not you, the teachers. The teachers and the parents have spoken, and some parents have spoken, but it's through contract. And I resent, and I'm going to tell you, I resent that article that your CEO placed in the paper, all that. And I'm going to say it was false. And if I wasn't a public official, I'll be suing y'all. For that article, just that particular article. And you're not being told the truth. Your funding will end before the end of the school year.
Do any of my other board members have any comments?
No, I mean, the decision has already been made, so.
Okay. Would the board wish to direct Attorney Reeves on this matter?
Decision has been made. We're not reconsidering.
Further options?
Okay.
What further options do you have?
Since they did not vacate.
So, yes, go ahead.
So you, you presently do not have any contract with North Florida Child Development. You don't have a lease, you don't have any of that. You directed them, and you never have for this school year. You directed them that they needed to vacate the property by today. If they have not vacated by today, then you need to decide what further action you wanna take. If you want to compel them to leave, the way to do that would be to direct me to tell, to file a action in court. That would either be an ejection or a, well, it would be an ejection action. Try to get a temporary injunction hearing as soon as I can, proceed that way, get them on out. That's, if, you know, if y'all want to do that, but of course, the board has to direct me if you want me to file a lawsuit or any of that kind of stuff.
And if you will, can you update us? I know that we are still awaiting guidance because of the government shutdown. That is a legitimate thing. So I don't know if you can speak to that.
Not a legitimate thing, because, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That's not a legitimate thing, because this, you know, when does the contract start?
Right.
When did it start?
Well, I, I just mean regarding the building and the funding.
The contract start, we've transported and fed children when we were not supposed to, all of August, September, and October. Have not been reimbursed for it. Bunch of confusion, bunch of confusion with the CEO. And...
Yes.
And so originally, what was being told was that, that they had some sort of a contractual agreement where they could stay. When we dug in deeper, we saw there was no such contractual agreement. What there was, was twenty-some years ago, when that build, when the Central School was being built and shortly after. They had applied for and gotten a grant, and so that grant money was used to build a portion of that building, those two classrooms. As a result of that, there was a notice of federal interest that was reported. That doesn't give anyone a right to stay anywhere, but it just means that the federal government may have an interest in that property, depending on how that property is going to be used in the future. So what we did was, or what I did, is I reached out to the director of that agency in Atlanta, or the regional director in Atlanta, gave a copy of all the, emailed a copy of all those documents, told what was gonna happen and what the board was considering, asked for any guidance we might be able to get. Well, the shutdown happened immediately after that. We, I've never gotten anything back, which is what I would have anticipated because of the shutdown. The, I do know that this has been circulated among our federal representatives and all of that. You know, so I can't give you 100% on what I think will happen, but I think it is unlikely that there would be adverse consequences, but, you know, I can't give you an absolute guarantee.
And all this started before the shutdown came. All this information was given before the shutdown. So it can't be blamed on the shutdown. You're not being told that they don't have the funding. They don't have funds to fund you through the end of the year. What we're trying to do now is, is get all of these children together so that they can progress. And we're taking this out of our funds. We're paying for it ourselves. So when you're told untruths, and untruths are spoken and untruths are published, they're just untruths.
I would like to, if I may, say that I, I am not at all saying this is a result of the government shutdown. I do feel like because of the government shutdown, we do not have guidance. Is that correct to say? We do not currently have guidance. You haven't heard back yet?
I have not heard back yet.
Okay, so I would just like the record to say that.
Could I clarify something? North Florida Child Development has been billed for meals. The September payment has not been received yet. So that was as of last week.
In October.
And then, so now they're fixing to be billed for October, and then one day in November.
So this is still under?
So as of last week, the check for the September meals has not been received. So I just wanna make that point of clarification.
Anything further?
Well, I voted against it at the start, but it was all, you know, but I, I, you know, the kids is, it's a thing. And, you know, that's why I said that to begin with, was, you know, I hate to mess kids up in the middle of the summer. But that was, it was the decision of the board then, you know. And, you know, some of the things that, that go on and that don't have anything to do with the children or the parents. That's, that's the things that, or the teachers that work there, that's the things that, that gets clouded and, and, and makes things worse. And unfortunately, the parents and the kids are the ones that suffer, and I hate that.
All right, would the board like to provide guidance for Attorney Reeves' meeting board?
Yeah, so do you want us to amend the agenda?
I think you'd need to if you're gonna take action.
Madam Chair, I would request that we would amend the agenda to take a vote to address the directive for Attorney Reeves for North Florida Child Development.
Ms. Knight has requested that we amend the agenda to direct Attorney Reeves on how to proceed with direction for North Florida Child Development. I don't need a second for that. I don't need a second for that, do I? I do?
If you're gonna do it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gibson has seconded. Ms. Tammy, I have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Gibson to amend the agenda. All right, all in favor of amending the agenda? Five zero?
Is there any further discussion?
How would, how would you all like to ask Attorney Reeves to proceed?
Madam Chair, I move that we ask Attorney Reeves to proceed with whatever means necessary to support the board's previous decision.
Just like he discussed earlier.
Including lawsuit or whatever.
Yeah, whatever we're gonna do.
Okay.
I hope it doesn't come to that, you know.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, okay. I have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Hagan, to ask Attorney Reeves to proceed with motions to have North Florida Child Development vacate. All in favor? All opposed? Four one. All right. There being no further business of the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Ms. Gibson has moved to adjourn the meeting. Adjourned.